First, prayer and prayers. I rest God upon heaven, we give you thanks, Lord, for all the blessings that you've bestowed on us. Thank you, Father, for the love that you've given us. And, Father, that you'd be with us in this workshop meeting today. That you would help us to think clearly. To articulate our thoughts, we're men. Whatever we do in a conference, you deny thanks of the prayers of this county. That you'd be with us, and you bless us with everything we accomplish. We give you the honor and the glory, which is Christ's name we have. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to remind everybody that this is our workshop, and we do not throw a workshop. We, if there's something to be going on, then we put it on another agenda, use it as an exit agenda. Number three, the board should continue discussion of potential Restore Act projects. If y'all recall, the last time we discussed this, not know how long it was, about, what, two months ago? It's lost by. But at that time, we decided to ditch the plans that we had previously worked on. And set, we discussed stormwater drainage solutions for Steenhazy. We also talked about trying to find ways to direct control traffic around the boat ramp at Keaton Beach and also in Steenhazy, very congested in both places during certain times of the year. Commissioner Moody has talked about Springwater City Camp, there's a boat ramp there that's for sale. And I have a project that I'm about to embark on, and that's with restoration of Hodges Park. So, the floor is open for anybody that wants to see.
I like it. That's something we can talk about in the past. There's a bypass right behind the parking lot, so from the boat ramp, it could be. To stop that traffic from coming down there, having a turn, going to the boat ramp from the parking lot. And, I'm not sure, but I believe that's something, being it would be direct to waterfront, full of the boat ramp area. It would be something we might could use to store our money on. And, I mean, just one of, every time we talk about it, something, you know, legal to do with the store act money. Takes a lot of questions and answers before you can ever come up with something. But improving that boat ramp, it would be something water, water containment, waterfront containment, you know, it would be something we could use. And that could be done, and that was trying to distract coming behind the park right there. And that, and that road there could be part of the parking lot and stationary for the boat ramp. It really is a boat ramp, whole six way from the park, the track goes right there, you know. I just think it's something we need to, we have to move on.
Did you have something to say about that?
Yes, both of us, yes. You know, I agree with everything you said. And my question is, to the woman, I'm sure, if I'm too wrong, my apologies, I can bring it up. I'm sure that you don't, you can't spend the Restore Act money on roads unless the roads add to erosion. You remember that conversation?
Right, so...
The woods, the roots that Jim talking about, or the catfish, or the, riding around the Steenhazy, I don't know if they qualify.
The direction that we received from the Gulf Consortium was that a dirt-to-pavement project could qualify if you could show, like, there's sediment that is being placed into a waterway or an estuary. So, that would qualify as an environmental project. Now, we did ask for some guidance as far as the bypass. And, the answer that we, that we received was potentially that could be an eligible project because it adds courage to our courage development, and that that could potentially be a project. So, I think what we would have to do is, instead of trying to give an answer for all projects, we could take the projects one by one to the Gulf Consortium leadership, and the consultants, and ask for guidance for particular projects. Which, I would be, I, I think if we could identify particular projects that you're interested in, we could receive guidance on that particular project.
Well, I would support a, a bypass around, and that's basically what you're, what you're saying.
Well, and look at all that jam out there, it's not, you know, it was just really, and I saw a plan years ago, they were talking about building something there before that boat was sold. It had a bypass, saw it there about the tower, it went gets over about the summer, so it was just my fur up there.
I, I would support that.
Ursula, in addition to what Mr. Moody's saying, when the storms come in, that road in front of the boat ramp is the first thing to flood, that we don't, it blocks everyone in. Therefore, if you do have a bypass around there, that's another evacuation route that some of the residents can use to get out of there.
Now, the only potential issue that we identified is that that corner where the coastal park is, is environmentally sensitive. So, we would have, you know, that's something that we would have to look at. We would have to stay away from any environmentally sensitive areas, which may be a challenge in, in that particular area. But, um...
Was it a wetland?
Yes, ma'am.
Ninety percent of those towns are wetlands.
Sort of, sort of it's wetland, sort of it's tied up. I looked at it one day, I looked at it, and I looked at it, I remember years ago, walking all over there, and going out on this year together. There's, there's a pretty high ground on the part of it. Only wetlands out there, it did cause some kind of storm, flooding that area, best I can remember.
I think it would, it mainly go around that corner, but there may, I mean, that's not maybe something to worry about.
It, it, that could be done, I know even though it's actually, you know, environmentally sensitive for it, but that is done in floodwater all the time, just like the turn back, addition of the other floors, yeah.
That's exactly what, well, let me just ask the rest of the board, if this is a project that, that y'all would support? If your, if this is going to be an activity?
Well, if it's going to have an impact or a benefit to the community in that area. If it's going to impact the community for the benefit, then I would be for that project. I wouldn't see why anybody wouldn't be for that project. Except the immediate stress on that corn, and Ursula's right, when it floods there, you can't do it in a fourhouse. So, actually, I've got to go back up twelve and a half miles to Julie Gray's, because I can't make that right-hand turn a thousand feet. From Julie Gray's to that spot, I'm at a thousand feet, and so, if we get, if we get a high tide, it's like, at the end of the day, it's worth it. But have some sort of alleviation, that would help. And, maybe we need to discuss the ranger's project in the future, but the immediate project would be some sort of alleviation. And I told you there was a couple people out there, the boat was finished, and you couldn't get out. Either A, put Julie Gray, Julie Morgan Gray back in her team, that way it didn't rain. Or, implement a bypass to get around, because if people come from Steenhazy and they just pass Fish Gray, and they don't make that right-hand turn on Fish Gray, and it's tempting to get, the boat ramp would be true. They wouldn't turn back around, or, you know, basically. So, it would be interesting to see something like that. I don't know if the impact would be, maybe, if blocking would affect it, if it's going to deny it or not, I don't know a lot of it.
I don't know, but, but the concept, um...
But if we can prove and set, and, and qualify this, we would have more.
Which is, yeah.
Unlike a, a good project, you care, sometimes it's just a matter of words, instead of being comfortable. Tourism, tourism, like, you want to get more popular, or not? Use another, I don't know what word you might use. Say, that if tourism, if the new store act money cannot be used to tourism, use another word, or even use that word. Use something, sorry, make another statement. To, or imply that that's what you need, and...
For, for a road, well, until it needs it.
Come here, yeah.
I support the bypass to manage the Keaton Beach boat ramp.
Okay.
And, as far as going through some weapons, we built progress road in the last time of the year. Up north that scene, going in there to that Leslie's old thing. I never seen a road built in a swamp, whether it was a whiskey, but they hauled it up sand in there, they built that road. So, I think there are ways you can get around that, without mitigating. And, but, but, but second, happy to do that. I also support doing what we can do at Springwater. We've talked about to kick that hand around for about four years, for five, you know, and...
That would take a lot of pressure off of Keaton Beach.
Lot of pressure, and I had a student, that stuck to me, I live in favor of that. And he said, "That's where I could go out fishing a lot." And he would take some pressure off of the boat ramp at Keaton Beach. And, we strapped the big plan, you know, the big, major boat ramp, that already had a small boat ramp.
It's got a concrete boat ramp.
Right, we could acquire the property, and we could store that money, then we'll talk to get a third act to build a boat ramp immediately. I support that, I support Steenhazy flooding, I support Hodges Park. And I thought and thought, thought, what else is, is I could support? And I keep coming up with it, and except the fact that, you know, we don't have to spend all that money in one year. You get a lot of it in front, this is a fifteen-year drawdown, isn't it, son? So, I don't know if it's any, how many you want to take on at one time. And I would think the money's out there, probably more than we've already identified.
We have four point eight million available now in top three funding.
By the time we get some of these done, there are more than four point three. But I could see taking four point three to build a Keaton Beach loop, you know, I'm just guessing. But those are good projects.
Now, what about some kind of detour around the Steenhazy boat ramp? I mean, that's a mess down there, and Steenhazy is not your road here. They're throwing and flowing and flowing, but they're outgoing now.
I agree with you a hundred percent. And then already a breeze, if you get around the island there, some traffic control devices, lights, or whatever. And what we talked about, Steenhazy probably needs a, a set. You know, this is community drawing, you need more, you know, this is far as the council on, it'd be a part of this far. Give us a set, something about what you did, that we need, as far as the bypass.
I'm not aware of it, it's the one we're talking about.
But, but I agree, we can go on and put that in our list of projects.
Yeah. Okay, now, let me just back up. You said, you know, all the things you've seen before.
Right, okay.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
I'm really spending all y'all, I'm going to go.
And I've said that I concur with all of that, that we got too much of it, you know.
At this current time, I'm, I'm working on a few things to bring to the county's attention, but I don't have all of them involved, I'm not going to bring that at this time. But, with these projects that have been approved, I would be in a real position, I just said it there before. Jim, I have a question for you, when you're calling this down there as Springwater, after the project is done, how many boats, how many parking lots do you propose down there?
I believe, it would be, I've seen at least forty trailers and trucks parked around the port.
That's, that's now, but if you...
And you, you could expand it some, without any environmental issues. All that scrub that arrived, like, every, you make the curve, under the figure three, and all of that can be cleaned up, and, and hired up there.
And that probably was for sale.
Yeah, all that's for sale, and then there's property that runs out into the marsh there, along that other road that comes head down toward the bridge. It's hired up there, and then a lot of it's in the marsh, you know, but it, 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 for, what they, what I heard they wanted for it, is, is a good project.
You would, you would envision about sixty foot?
I, I could see, I could see sixty foot, say, for a bit of cleanup, and rock climb off it on it, or milling, you could, you could probably...
But that would help believe it's easy to handle. Steenhazy, you park about two hundred there? I mean, at Keaton Beach, you know, for... I was understanding, it's something, and it's spread out beyond the side of the road, and everything.
When you sit there at Keaton Beach, or at DeKalb Beach in the morning, daylight breaks, all them boats that's coming out of Keaton Beach, ninety percent of them heads are that way anyway.
You're right.
I mean, they just come out of the canal, and all of them come down on the path to DeKalb Beach, and going to Springwater. All that old bar, bar, old bar, and red fish and trout, and, and all they go is part of Rock Island. From Rock Island back to Springwater, it's bad fishing, boats down anyway.
We just want to make sure that, um, that, that, um, when that happens, that the public is well aware that there's that boat ramp there.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do want to remind the board that, um, if we acquire any land, that we have to have a, an appraisal, right? And, and, you know, we want to give a fair price, whether it will come out of the gouges. It has to be a fair, a fair value that we, that we would, um, offer. Um, I think it's finished with?
It's on, isn't it? Oh, just like I said, now, I don't think that involves, that's down Springwater a lot, that it's going into Keaton Beach.
Well, part of that, I mean, it's about, it's about marsh, it's a mint quarter, it's not involved.
And most all of, you know, that sea grass, yeah, they prime that sea grass. And I think, maybe four people in the old country live off that sea grass, and others live off, I don't know what.
Well, and, you know, the project we've already identified, that I'm very interested in, is Hodges Park. So, right now, we've got a possible bypass at Keaton Beach boat ramp, a possible, um, possible bypass around Steenhazy. We've got Hodges Park, we've got Springwater, and what would be all those Steenhazy waters?
You mean, you're saying about...
That, that's a stormwater, um, probably than Steenhazy. So, that's what, five, is that five projects? Probably more than we'll ever have the money to do, but, well, if I can speak to that, sure. Um, come up here so we can hear you.
So, we've been, Scott has been, um, working to identify some other funding sources for some of these projects that the board has in mind, just so we can leverage all the funds that we have. And, um, I had a conversation with Army Corps of Engineers representatives today. Um, and if I, if I get a agreement from the board at current, what I would like to do is send a request to the Corps of Engineers for technical assistance. And they have some funding available, where, I'm hoping at the very least, they could provide us with a feasibility study for the Steenhazy area, uh, for stormwater control. Yes, and, um, what I'd like to do is send a letter to the Corps of Engineers. We have not worked with them previously on grant opportunities. So, I'm very excited about it, and it may open some other doors. But we still like to might be to, to start with a, you know, a small area, and, and see how this works out. Um, I believe if we are approved, the funding would be available a little quicker than going through the FPT amendment. Now, just to remind the board, the FPT amendment is, is something that we would take to the Gulf Consortium in January. And there's a forty-five day NYIP public comment period, and then it would be possibly approved at the next meeting, which would be, say, around March or April. So, you know, it's not something, an FPT amendment is going to take some time. But, what we'd like to do is work on some of these opportunities as we go along, to see if we can leverage these different funding opportunities, with the hope that something will, will come through yours. We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket. We also are going through, um, we're planning to submit a grant application for hazard risk mitigation funds, for accounting-wide feasibility study, or, really, it would be an engineering study for stormwater improvement. Uh, and, um, we'll be working on that as well. Now, I know, um, other districts, and, and, yeah, because, you know, we've all got flooding issues in our district, that's going to be sufficient soon. And when I spoke with the Army Corps of Engineers representative today, he did tell me that there are different programs available for technical assistance. But, the bigger those that you have, the more of a mess, the county has to mess. Um, which is why we were thinking about concentrating on a smaller area, but we'll bring that back to the board. Also, um, we could possibly apply for a land and water conservation grant, for a possible renovation of Hodges Park. Now, that grant application is due January fifteenth. That is a two hundred thousand dollar grant with a fifty, fifty mess, so it would be a four hundred thousand dollar project. So, what we would like to do is the board wishes to move forward with improvements to Hodges Park. We tend to start working on that grant application now, to date in January, while we're also going through the FPT amendment process. And we're working with Corps of Engineers and Emergency Management for hazard risk mitigation grant funds.
Okay, now, I, I envision that four hundred thousand dollars will not be sufficient to do Hodges Park. So, what would the remainder come out of the, out of that?
I would, I would, yes, ma'am. Would, would be...
I would have them to take it all out of the store act money, we could, so we wouldn't have to spend it.
Have that mess too, but, uh...
We could use the store act, I think, for that.
For the mess?
Yes, okay. That's a lot of...
But, I, I think, I don't know, you've got a new pavement, and new bathrooms, it's, it's, it's done, everything costs more if it's done, than to put some pay out here, business out. So, I don't know, four thousand, whatever.
It's a little long.
No, I think, um, this preliminary thinking, it would be probably double that. But what we could do is place the mess from our top three funds.
Your...
Well, it does make two, that, if, you know, you and I have talked about this, and I'm interested in starting to look at some plans, and get something together, and then we can get an offset for it, and we know exactly what we're talking about there.
So, the hope is that we could, um, if we submit a grant application for the, um, land and water conservation fund grant, January fifteenth is the deadline, then, um, and it feels like that we could have a preliminary design to send to that grant application, and that would, that would give us an idea of, of any type of price for that project.
Well, what is a new way of doing that?
Um, I need to say something, I'm going to get the grant ready for January, because I... We just need the current from the board. If, if you tell me tonight that that's something that, you know, you would like us to start working on, then we will work on it. Now, the other piece of the puzzle that we need, we have to have our five years B I T approved prior to January, because that gives us second much with this particular grant.
That's a good, okay.
Yes.
That's a lot of news.
Yes, so, and we'll, you know, we'll talk about that later on in the meeting, but what I, what I'd like you to do is to review that, and then if we need to discuss it at the November workshop, um, and then we just, we need to approve it in the December meeting. So, we can have all of that, um, approved prior to the grant submission deadline.
Well, for me, I'm, it's, it's a, it's a goal for me to go ahead with these grants, because I want to leverage all, all our money that we can, leverage everything that we can, so, um...
It's a lot of moving pieces, but I was, I was really encouraged, after our, my discussion with the Corps of Engineers representative, um, he's very helpful, he's already sent me a draft letter, a form of submission, and they will, as well, aside to, to discuss the different programs that they have available. And I was very, very encouraged after our conversation this morning. Now, again, this is a new program, so, I'm a little anxious about it. We have not requested grant funding from the Corps of Engineers before.
Well, if they don't have any footage, take out sand, or not, keep it out, then just our friends, you know, send it to go out.
I did bring that up today.
How do you want to help us?
Well, there's a lot of big national, this is a different pot of money, I did bring that up today.
Oh, it's a different pot.
Different pot of money, different program, and...
And you did, and you did bring up sand, Mark.
I asked, you know me, I did.
Oh, okay, you will.
Been waiting ten years for, for that work to be done. And he, he did say, well, I understand, but this is a different program, and from what I understand, it's funded a little differently, and he was very encouraging. Now, again, I mean, we haven't seen the grant application, we don't know what will happen from it, but I would like to, if we discuss it, we'll have, and see if we can...
Come on, man, sweet.
You know, one thing, you mentioned Hodges Road, and when they were doing that project, you know what show we did up one time? Was that indigo snake, do you know that that's a protective? That indigo snake is protective, they were talking about that last week, down in, uh, out there.
I was kidding, you still a little sick off that, and it's been long, they go...
Oh, yeah.
You're a bite, but... I got one other thing I want to bring up, that we need to, that we need to put in mind, that they do, to help the work come forth. From the, down Holloway River boat ramp, down the river, that, that last storm, it flowed down a bunch of trees in the river. And we need to get, we need to get them trees out of that river.
I had a call about that.
We got some earth and fishermen, crabbers and fishermen coming going there, and low tide, they get them trees. And we need to, we need to work on getting them trees out of that river.
That's right, but I'm sure the same person that called, he called me, and he had, well, now, what I think was a great idea. Um, he was talking about their Hampton Springs, of making that where you can put canoes in, and get, when you clean out the river, and get all these trees and logs and everything outside the river, right there, you could put canoes in, and you could canoe down that, that Holloway, that Holloway is a beautiful river.
It went, went, once that five line building, it was like, it's not going to be a beautiful river. It's going to be a kayak, and, and the Hampton Springs water, that time, will take a big summer round.
And, and that's what is, that, that, now, how could we fund something like that, or something, um...
Um, hey, so the season, you were probably up there. Hey, you were up there, isn't it? You made up, that was you, right?
I don't know, you need to...
No, I was up there.
Or we...
But I've got this thing that, that he's already talked with everybody, and we were like, the last offer, but, um, you know, but we do need to find out how we can get the trees removed, like Mr. Moody said. And let's look into it, if everybody's okay with it, about putting a kayak launch there, can do, because that would, that would make dog.
They really would, and, I know this was back, I looked at, they could put my name and number, phone number, my cell number on a tree, that's why I'm out there, when you come out of the boat ramp, you can see, you can have a question about this boat ramp, call this number. You got a lot of, they got a good sign over my living number on it.
Now, one other question that I have, the drinking of the canal at Keaton Beach, where, uh, where are we at with that?
Well, if you'll recall, at the October, I think the last board meeting, the board approved the grant application for the design, um, permitting and engineering, I believe. So, as far as I know, Langton was submitting that grant application, and then we're just, it's been pre-approved by Treasury. But Treasury has to approve the grant application, and then we can, then we'll have to have an R S P, um, for the services, and then we'll, the board will do that.
I, I've had someone express to me their opposition to Lang, Langton, if you had any problem with this, it's true. I, I'd rather share that with them, it's a personal privilege.
I've had some frustration, and the way the time is taken, but...
It took a year to do something that shouldn't have taken a year.
But, I don't know how much of that is because of Treasury. So, we really do need to, um, go back and, and unravel.
Well, I'm just sharing all my friends, I'll share more about it later.
And, and it, and they have agreed to, you know, report to the board and give quarterly updates, which I think will help all of us understand the timing, and help all of us be accountable as far as the time is taken to move this project forward.
Well, where am I?
Uh, let me talk about the Holloway land.
Uh, let me talk about the ten hallway landing. Uh, it is called Pick Landing Gem, the one.
Yeah.
Uh, Pick Landing, you know that, that's, that's, uh, seagrass out there is not in the...
It's not in there, it's not in the seagrass reserve.
I had a citizen approach me, and said, y'all can't do any dredging because it's in the seagrass reserve. He said, I'll have to put in down there, ten hallways. And if you, somebody put permit of canal out there through that, and not seagrass. But then I was told by another individual that what we thought was, I guess, Georgia's biggest problem, they're selling that. It's not, oh, you know about that?
Four rivers on the development right on ten hallway, young lady here, probably knows that. I don't know what happened, but I don't know how much water is gonna be in the river when they take it out of there anyway, you know?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that four rivers have the first option, um...
To buy?
Yes, and they, they want to exercise that option.
I mean, you know, go put a boat ramp, put it all on that land. Not like they're rich, like they've got rich down there, nobody owns that.
Nobody owns that.
But anyway, I thought I had a little bit of merit, if you want. You got, you got a spray warriors, and ten hallways, not that far, can't put together.
You know, what I think with four rivers and this is a little sun, well, liability, liability. They don't want to do nothing, they don't want no boat ramp like that.
No, they don't.
After they were out, they don't want boat ramps. So they, chances are, hopefully, keep your fingers crossed that we can keep using that boat ramp home and up, you know?
They're, they're lucky, they won't put a gate down here, but I guess they can't.
Well, they, they can't bought roads, it's about there the boat ramp that up, can't maintain roads. You know, but they actually on the foot spring of the boat ramp, you know? Or they don't, I mean, it's only Georgia's fifth county in the US. But they don't want to rely on some French park, you know? I think down the road, they'll work with us on it. They do love that a lot of the things in there.
So for clarify this, um, with our, our fall project that, that we have identified, and pretty much, we want this to be it. We don't wanna have to come back and change this, this BIP again. I would, I would think that, that this, this will, this will be it for now. I mean, and everybody's okay with that.
And, and five years is enough. If we don't have money left, we come back and change the BIP for them.
But I mean, so...
But right now, I, I think our place is full, you can work the issues of all those five projects.
Well, I understand, we guarantee the money. They, you know, if we spend, we get our projects done, and we got more money coming, they gonna give us some more lead weight to use that money for, for our next project.
I can ask comrades, um, I've got this, this question. If, if we're guaranteed that money, could we then take a law lawyer or something to do some of these projects? Or how risky does that guarantee?
That would be risky, because, you know, we all heard this, um, the BP might follow that one, you know? I've always, I've always been afraid of that, you know, because the longer this goes, more...
Well, we might get nothing.
I don't, I hope that doesn't happen, but...
Well, we have, we know we have the four point eight million. And then we have, we have a sequencing table that shows how often we receive funds. If they're also, right, well, I don't know that, I think that the four point eight we have is secure. Treasury has that, but, well...
I'd like to see cash.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, how do they operate? Does they, what do you do, a project and pay for it, and we get reimbursed? But I understand the drawdown have a very quick turnaround. Because, you know, we discussed that several times, that, you know, it is a reimburse, it is reimbursement, which is probably why we're doing one project at a time. And so what I think we need to do is go through the FPT amendment process and bring that back to the board before we submit to the Gulf Consortium. And then we'll have the public comment period. And once that's adopted or approved by the Gulf Consortium, then at that point, I think, we'll have a better idea of the funding sources. And we can ask the board to rank these projects and see which one you want to be first. And, um, and, and by then, I think that other counties will have more experience as far as the drawdown, how long it takes to get the money back, if there are any issues, and that we're just, could have been a better position.
Will all these counties start giving their money at the same time? Or it depends on when your project, or, and, and, and have any of them started yet?
Uh, I think that the first, um, grant submissions were approved by the Gulf Consortium, I would say, it's been recently.
It's been within the last few months.
I can't, well, which county?
I believe it was the Iowa Western in, in Tennessee.
There's several counties, and I believe most of those projects were subject to sewer. Um, or maybe it has been an estuary project. But other counties are now submitting FPT amendments. We're not the only ones to, um, have had a change in, in what direct to me weeks ago. So I, and I feel, I mean, the, the consultant has been very helpful. And as soon as we get guidance, I'll send that to him, or Melody and I will work with him, and we'll, we'll start moving this along. So I may come back and say, okay, well, you know, we may re, need to reconsider. But now I have the list, and I can move forward with that.
And let's monitor the other counties that are already, just see, like you say, how long does that turn around before they get reimbursed? Because, you know, with us, that would be very simple for them.
But I did speak with other colonels when they weren't here for their quarterly report. And she, and she and Mike Langton said, oh, the turnaround is a lot quicker than, than you're imagining. Because I was quite anxious about that, but that was reassuring.
Have you found roads or holding towns out there between the four?
And that's, I, I know this, this time, I know you're better.
Okay, anyone who's gotten on this number three, uh, this Storax project? Maybe good, if not, we'll go to number four. The board to discuss employment centers, eleven.
Typically, this time of year, I will bring information to the board. Um, it's advising you of our balance of funding and reserve for capital improvement and ask for feedback from the board if you're interested in funding employment centers. As you know, we did not fund, um, pay raises this fiscal year because of budget constraint. So typically, what we'll do is see what our balances in general funds, um, reserve for capital, and then we will also look at, at our last table, will be the first meeting in November, and we'll see what was returned by constitutional officers before we ask you to make a final decision unless you're comfortable with the balance of funding or you wish to not offering centers.
If we can afford it, I sure love to give them.
I'd, I'd like to give, since that, boy, now that already Commissioner Russell's here. And we got that back there, pay rates, which caused us some tanks the following year. Uh, I don't think, as much as I'd love to, that we can afford to give, quote, a pay rate, you know? Because this is not a recurring revenue. I, I would support a farm, I don't, it's far as it may, um...
Well, that's an incentive.
An incentive, right. And I see a figure here of a thousand dollars of a full time employee. Remember last year, the head of us, uh, gift card, came back to buy? We don't wanna go that route.
And that was a very small...
Yeah, that was very small. And I don't wanna get caught in, in saying, you make this so, it'll do you in some. So I, I would, uh, I would support a thousand, just the rest of the board would.
Now, that's a thousand dollars net, so that's why the cost is so high, and that would...
And then five hundred for the part time.
Yes, sir, so we have, at present, um...
Just one, please. You mean, take your mind, girl.
I would probably be a little more conservative than that.
All right, I'll throw another number, I'll say.
I, I, um, I think, what's the total of that? Uh, so, pretty big.
That's less than what we got back from here.
The thousand dollars you presented?
Yeah, here, there. That's what I'm saying. I, I figure if I started with a high number, I could always convince them.
Seventy, fifty ain't bad.
You can use it in bad.
Is it before or after time?
That's, that's the net.
The net, yeah.
I, I'll bet nobody would turn that down, although we wouldn't have a dedication up there plus that.
Well, we give a five hundred and two fifty, what, two years from now? Is it two, three years?
I believe that is.
Mr. Russell's been dead three years?
Mm-hmm.
Frank Russell was here the last time they had a raise, was that three years ago?
But we're talking about this Christmas.
Yeah, this Christmas.
I think if any of the people went out, we did a five hundred for a full time and two fifty for, um, part time.
Well, now, this is all, without this, the more cash carry forward, mother, you know?
I'd take fifty, that, that, that would be, yeah, that would be impressive. A hard working people.
Well, it's not many employees who were thrilled with a gift card last year, I will...
Well, I, yeah. I could move, uh, a thousand, I'd lower it to seventy, but anything more than that, I'm not going for tonight.
Now, what was that, seventy fifty part time?
No.
Happy that five hundred.
Seven fifty for a full time, and three hundred back for a part time.
Yeah, that would call me out.
No, this is just a common point, we have to bring it back to the board. Probably the second meeting in November, that, that way we'll have the numbers burned up. We'll know exactly what, um, returned from all constitutional officers and what's the balance of our funding and is our reserve for capital free notice. You don't, you don't have to make the decision tonight.
And, and the very new album, one number, we're looking for.
And what?
If we have additional money, and, but I'm not over going to pass stuff out. So if we had additional money, we would have passed by this. All I'm saying, that's the value of this money, we should spend our capital improved on.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question? Um, so you're telling me the employees have not had a raise in three years, my question is, two years? And the only opportunity that they would get a raise again would be on the new level next year?
Right.
Unless another year, that's three years.
That's right.
I would look for the thousand and five hundred.
That's, that's... You and I are thinking more and more like.
Huh?
I think you and I are thinking more and more like.
We agree on something, right?
We agree on something, right?
Right now. But do, do it over a three year period? They don't make a whole lot of money, a lot of them don't. Divide that over a three year period, that, that can get them a hand up. They, they deserve, the majority of them deserve it. There are some, some that don't need to be there, but I watch those people out there in mud holes, in this ditch, and busting their hinds, and doing it for, even everyone of us to move, right?
Mm-hmm.
Of course, one, one, thousand, five hundred.
Thousand, five hundred.
You're waiting for it.
Yes.
Thousand, five hundred, thousand, five hundred.
I'm gonna kick it.
A thousand and five hundred.
Thousand, five hundred.
So, and...
I do that, I do that.
As soon as I, I received a go-ahead from finance, I can share with finance the direction that's thinking at the board, and we'll bring it back to the board for a vote, and we'll have some better members come up by then.
Okay.
You know what, and I, I'd like to say, but young folks, if they want to strike, you know, they give a employee, ten thousand.
How much?
Eleven thousand dollars.
And they were all talking over, ten thousand?
Twelve.
Ten thousand, yeah.
Little chuckle, six thousand nine, one hundred and sixty.
Okay, number five, we want to...
The thing was, the stock went down to zero, and then they restarted again, so, so, watch it out.
Number five, we want to continue discussions of draft speed pump policy.
I actually put on this agenda because I spoke to, oh, a lady on front turner room. And I spoke to this week another lady, and I don't really know who lives on that road. And she says, you have no problem with speed there. My thought would be, if we have a problem in a residential district, and I'm looking at the road, and you were affecting your speed, well, and one of your neighbors complained about it, I wouldn't have an opposition to that. But, uh, if you got to go to study, and it's got to be eighty-five percent dollar better, if people don't speed, it'd be complicated for me.
And I talked with the, I have a little bit different views, but we'll be frank.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's the thing. Um, I've given this a lot of thought, and I did talk with the sheriff today. And the sheriff said that he can set up his equipment, and that he can give us all kinds of that, how many cars is on the road? How fast they're going, what percentage are exceeding the speed limit, and, and so on and so forth. So, to back off a little bit, I'm thinking, okay, if, if someone in a neighborhood, and I think you should have, my opinion is, that I think you should have at least sixteen percent of the people in that neighborhood or road that would agree. That's kind of like, you said sixty percent for a constitutional amendment, and sixty percent, it seems like a...
That's a fair number.
A fair number, you know?
I think about our percentage, it's a sixty percent.
It wasn't hundred percent at one time, but I think it's outrageous.
Now, the sheriff's being a good one right now, bro.
Well, it's, it's, it's a talk we, today. But, um, you know, I thought, if somebody wants to put in the hump, which humps are different than bumps, humps, well, they're, they're more expensive, but they're more effective. The bump, the little bump, they're noisy, they can be pulled up by people that don't like them, but they're best expensive. But if someone wanted to take their money and pay for a hump, then we would never say, no, you can't do that as long as it's got sixty percent, if that's what everybody agrees on, agreement with their people. But then I think about, you got other areas, it's one of us has areas where we have speeding problems. I've had a lot of calls, I know y'all have too, about areas with speeding. And a lot of those areas, those people would never have the money to get together and, and pay for speed humps, because it wouldn't be one speed hump, typically, it's gonna be a series of, of speed humps. And then I just, you know, I could have the argument if I was somebody like that and said, well, you know, I already pay taxes, um, for, uh, to be protected, or I pay taxes so that my family is safe. So why could I have to pay for it? Which I think will be a good argument. And so, then I'm thinking, well, we couldn't afford to pay one hundred percent, I don't think, of all the humps, if you establish some pretty good criteria. But if we, maybe they say half, and we need half, or something like that.
That would be a good compromise.
Uh, but, you know, I think that you, you, the set your criteria, I think you gotta have some, I think you gotta have set criteria, because say for instance, in some of these areas, if you've got fifty cars, say the sheriff put the equipment in, and you've got fifty cars, and you've got five cars that are speeding, is that one hump? And are those five that are speeding, are they five humps that are speeding in it, or are they fifteen or one?
Or one, that's, that's about, that's pretty bad, huh?
And like, when the, I thought the sheriff, like, the board, you've got an area where you've got low traffic, if you've got, say, one or two offenders, then he can wait and go out there and try to take care of that. But I don't know, if people wanna bother wrong, then I'm thinking that were people that can't, that need a different, just as, like...
I, I...
You got kids with bicycles, kids out playing.
I didn't think about the fact that we found people sitting on a board. I'm trying to make, um, you know, not that, uh, let's drop that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think the sixteen percent... I, I, I think the sixty percent, I guess, and on that note, sixty percent of residents on the street have to agree to this, and then somehow they have to go up to sixty percent of the money.
Need somebody to enforce this, feed it all, that's too much gum, maybe somebody may have the cost, if someone wants money, trying to enforce it.
Well, I, I forgot about, about the road that's been thrown in my eyes, and they have taken extra effort to go out there. And, uh, I bet they've ever touched base with this thing. But, uh.
They had to all wake up, but it's kind of like, it's, uh, speaking to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if I'm there, we need to see hump, hump, and all, if y'all want to pursue it anymore. I think right now, it's probably gonna leave like this, no box. What do you think?
No, I, I, I don't mind setting up charges, but I think we need to come a lot of salt in it, and get a, get a, a, gather some of the sheriff, and, and if we're about, if we decide we want to fund that, that's kind of a little hard.
Mr., Mr. Conrad, straight, straightening y'all out on this speed bump business. Last time, Mr. Broderick, remember when they had a lawsuit in my book about the speed bump?
Somebody's got a lock in my pillow bed.
You can't, you wouldn't, if you, if you got somebody who spent half the money on a speed bump, and a community spent half, and then somebody did a promoter talk on that hill, they'd be suing the county and the end of it. That would be just, wasn't that?
Yeah, you're talking about humps, too. Before I would even sit or, um, put in a hump anywhere, I would want to talk to our carrier, um, our insurance carrier, to see what their position is with regards to speed, speed humps. Um, because there are, there are offers with regards to, you gotta, you gotta engineer, and you gotta put them in right, you know, you gotta maintain them, um, all those kind of things, and how, how tall are the humps? You know, the last time y'all talked about, you talked about, uh, not necessarily speed bump or, or, uh, humps, you talked about a, a rumble trip, you know? The rumble trip, like, if you're, um, uh, if you're going on, if you're, uh, on fourteen, you know, uh, and you're turning on fourteen to come to Terry, um, there's this, this, uh, rumble trip. They're good, because number one, they wake you up.
Yes.
Number two, they, they're not gonna throw you off the road, like, like, when you see a hump, they throw you off the road, they won't throw you off the road, the rumble trip, well. The only problem with rumble trips is they're noisy, they're noisy, and they be noisy to the neighbors. I, I just think that, um, before you act with respect to that, you know, do a little study with regards to what the liability is, um, and of course, you know, the free to ask the insurance carrier what, what they think about it.
Yeah, well, you know, in, in terms of those rumble trips, I don't know, but I would think that they're not designed to slow you down. They're designed to make you know you're fixing to have a stop, or you're gonna run out of traffic.
Like, they're meant to, really, rumble trips, they're one of the dead man's curves, and they work for me, but it does slow me down.
Right, but do you want your house, do you want rumble trips in front of your house, I don't want to come out.
I can actually hear that from my house, it doesn't bother me, I'd rather hear that than hear somebody rapping to the roof.
Well, I know that we talked about rumble trips in our neighborhood one time, and everybody's there, and I have a fit, because they're so noisy, and who wants to do this all during the night, with a rumble trip? But again, you have to get, whatever we decide, and the people that said, okay, I'll follow that.
Well, I know more in most cities, I'm sure, away, and they're pulling, uh, up, because of law. So where you're seeing speed bumps in your neighborhood, like, on private property, or in mall parking lots, or gay communities, but outside of that, generally, the cities are pulling out.
Okay, well, you know what, I really don't care.
I don't agree.
Really, really, I don't care one way or another, whatever this will decide in the time, but, yeah, I don't care. It, it might have been the, the county put a strip in at Keaton Beach, and within a month, the neighbors complained so much about it, it came in here to go back out and take them back out.
That's a problem.
It was a few years ago, yeah. Yeah, see, I don't want that in front of my house, but we have a problem in front of my house down at Hoggis Park. But I sure don't want a rumble trip there.
But the same with Peter Island, they come in there, I talked to the engineer on the road department here about the traffic coming in there, because in the summertime, they go fifty-five, sixty miles an hour down that street, yeah, and God forbid one of those kids get run over, and that's what I'm waiting on. But they, he told me the same thing, that, that he wouldn't have to buy it himself, and it was six to eight thousand dollars, to put the humps, not the humps, the, the less noisy ones.
That's what I, that's what I talked to our chief carrier, and then we can get into this one.
And you're talking about Walton, and if, if somebody's child got run over, he caused a speeder going by, I would say, well, county didn't do anything to try and hit it there, so, you know, you can't be more.
Yeah, the county did come, yeah, the county did come out and install a bunch more, um, speed limit signs, uh, children at play signs, uh, no litter signs. It doesn't slow them down, it's, it's, they're going too fast.
You've got to have law enforcement, that's the ticket, you've got to have law enforcement for it. You put all the times, all the speed bumps, all the traps, cameras, you put all of there, if they don't see a bad stand there, they're not.
Well, the thing is, and I called them, and they told me about several roads in my district, and they can't sit on ABC roads every day. And they can sit there a day or two, and the people slow down, and the minute they leave,
That's right.
they speed up, and it's, how many roads of all of us got that would like to have a dead thing on? When I have that many dead, we just stay on these roads every day, so they do the best they can. It's not real sexist, and they know that, but they just can't sit on them breath.
But they do have data compilation to machine, where they put the camera, make, see how many, you know? Like, our issue with speed, we, we, you know, we're treating it, we're curtailing it, right? We have that, all of the citizens, we have a lot of people all in one page at one time, and here's our issue. And I put that in, that's what the district, we all see the impact on the road, and it's, 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 uh, but I believe that if people were here, and they knew, like, Sunday, on Sundays, don't speed on these roads, why is that? Because I was told that I was gonna be slow on Sundays, but for thirteen years, I'm always looking for it, I was telling, and he's somewhere on that road every Sunday for thirteen years, but people know that it's present there.
Well, the sheriff can put that thing out anywhere and, and give you all kind of that, uh, you know, what the average speed is, how many cars, um, so, I'm not sure, whatever y'all want to do.
Look, you're a little more study, and that's, that's the bitch that have a lot of fear, the top side of insurance carrier, and I'm not used. Whatever the, the youthful world would do, I, I wouldn't pay the ball.
Uh, so we can bring it back in November?
Bring it back, and we can workshop this one more time. And it ought to be reasonable, and all these times, we've, we've got about a hundred and sixty percent of people on that road, except for you. The only thing I'm taking on now is the, the county's gonna have to pay for it. Six percent, I can deal with that.
But you have to have a pretty strict criteria for that.
For that to happen, right.
Can you not do a, a special assessment in that district, or that subdivision, or whatever, to the property owners?
Well, you could, I mean, you know.
They, 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 citizens on that road.
If, if they agree, but if they want to vote for it, then it's all the people in, like, Peter Island, then you have to have sixty percent or more, and then it would be a special assessment over.
Yeah, we got to sign that, and then that money just trickles down, and they over, counseling.
They put their money over many years, but he said that, for, for years, yeah.
Well, you know, when we get all this extra money, and what we're talking about for an employee, it's expensive, and everything. Okay, we use some of that money for public safety.
Over in Mossella County, I know there's a road, and it's supposed to be, kind of like yours. They go down the road, and then they got a circle, that's a circle around the island, and then they're coming around. They got a letter there, and then a flower bed built next to it, and they don't make a, you know,
Yeah.
put a set circle, but it goes up there, and it's just kind of oohs around that punt.
I like that.
And it slows everybody down.
They do.
It's about there, Keaton Beach, you had three on between Hoggis Park and Comstock, and they could dig it.
But you've got, you know, friends on someone's property, and I'm like, you've just put the roadway on me.
You've done that roadway. You've done that roadway there to do that, probably, I would think. Um, but on, on, there, deep, deep, you can, you can, you can truckload it all, with a pile of, and then it's done. Yeah, that's what they do, they come up around there, if you have to slow down, or just, you know, you have to go around.
I don't, doesn't think so.
Can we, can we take some of the money that's given back to these people for public safety?
I don't know, the same money, please, get all some money for something that would typically be funded with gas tax funds?
I, I don't know, because that road, uh, is funded by gas tax. All right, get my name.
Can we get that for public safety?
I doubt it.
Okay, good. See, when you find, say, again, I wrote a couple, and then when you wrote a couple, it runs out money next July, and you pulled that out of the general fund, and replenished the, um, in one region, because he gets their part of the gas tax, and the county gets their part.
I doubt you can do that, you can't transfer some of the general for those reasons, no.
I think, well, uh, the stuff in the hump. The same money, you've got seven, and a, and a, for those, and a general fund?
Yeah, it's, it's in a special account, we did that, so you know, it would be controlled, yeah.
Because, you know, kids will have their hands up with that, too.
Mm-hmm. Good stuff.
Number six, we want to continue discussion of draft capital improvement plan. We originally discussed this back in February, and what we've done is gone back to our department heads several times, and asked them to really look ahead, you know, for five years. Um, this whole year twenty twenty has already been approved and funded. Um, and so what's important to remember about the capital improvement plan is that in order to obtain maximum, in order to obtain, um, maximum points for some of our grants, we should have an approved capital improvement. What I would like, um, which is a lot of information, a lot of numbers, what I would ask the board to do is to spend some time going through this, asking any questions, providing a feedback, and then possibly bring it back in November. We would, um, ask for a vote at the September meeting. We have to have it approved prior to committee grant application for the, um, the grant that we would be pursuing, for renovations and improvements to Hoggis Park. We have included the twenty-five percent of the one cent sales tax obligation in these numbers, and we have designated whether it's local funding or outside funding. So, the first thing we would need to do is to add the Hoggis Park improvements and all the other closets that the board's been discussing, so this actually will change again. Um, and just for the board's information, every, every budget work section, we would basically reapprove the capital for that year. So this is just a plan, this is just a look ahead for five years, and I, we've really discussed with all the department heads to really reflect upon what we may need, um, this is an absolute, and I have asked them to estimate higher rather than lower. What we don't want to do is to ask for funding, and then realize we don't have enough, we don't have enough to fund a purchase of a new vehicle or to do some of the projects that we have in mind.
Now, but the, when, this, put together, is this legitimate need and not want, and would like to have, but this is need?
That is my understanding of this need. And, and we've, but, that being said, we've asked every department head the board has, what they think they may need. So I would say every budget year is, we've realized we don't need another vehicle, we can, you know, that's something that we can change, that is really, I would say, a working document, that can be, that can be changed every year, and that's really the purpose of it.
Now, I, I read through this, not as thoroughly as I will, but this is a plan, as you said. A plan to change, and let's, let's talk. Uh, we may have some more questions. There's one, you think there is just out of me, and I said, I just have some explanation. But, my six, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a front end loader, by the way, is that anybody's, not at all?
Well, I would think.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars front end loader, that's sixty, but.
That's okay. And it may be that when we get to that point.
Get to that point. Well, I've changed this, we're going on.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and what did the, uh, that three fifty at one time, the fifty something five?
Well, that's, you got, that's, that's a load of, 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 that's a loader, isn't it?
No, sure, we used a tractor for that.
Uh?
I believe we used a tractor for that.
Was it a big hit?
Uh, it did the, no, we test drove it, and it was not, we ended up leaving it there.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm. And we call about every other day and ask, are we done yet, are we done here?
We got that, right. Along the way, I don't have the big ticket out, I'm coming back, for the board to allow that, and the plan, and appreciate the hard work some of them did.
Martha worked very hard on it, our department heads worked very hard on it, and I will say, there was a little bit of trepidation, because, um, when I told them, you know, you don't want to underestimate, um, and we really need to look ahead for five years. So, you know, I, I believe they all understand that this is, that this is need.
It's good.
Yes, absolutely. Well, this is good, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of this, it's something that I have asked for beginning with that, real, Dr. Hankel, um, had let me in now, it took this long to get this document, and I'm just really pleased that you put this together, and it looked like a good job. Thank you.
Thanks. And what we have to do to prove this, is just carry on, we know the light.
Absolutely, and we have these questions, we've reached out to us, I mean, we, we've done, I will say, we've done, we've tried to double check numbers, but, I mean, and it's also possible that they're off on numbers, or that we won't need a front loader when the time comes around. Something else may come up, obviously, in the next quarter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the board to discuss the next, next project list. Um, we have some, it's not information for you that we, that we have to print out, I'll drive. Um, we wanted to give you another working document, so it's not only what we have on our list, but what we've accomplished in the last year. So we will provide these to you as well, just, just for the board's information. But as far as the, um, so on the ordinance and the regulations, we have two pending, we have the no tobacco vaping ordinance, um, that we are getting ready to advertise, and the regulation of the temper colored wave assessment that we will advertise after tonight's September meeting. And as far as the master project list goes, um, you want me to go through, through every project? I'll be happy to, but I don't know if we're good.
All of these projects have been completed, didn't they?
Uh, uh, almost, no, no.
On, on the completed.
Definitely.
Yeah, I'm looking at the master project list, is that what you're saying, how about, say, this document here is all of our open, I don't see the project.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't have that.
We have, we have twenty dollars.
I've got these, but I don't have the, the money to supply them on, yeah, that.
Yeah, the orange, the, yeah. No, no, that's making them donate.
Are they done with Harrison Moore? Are they done with Harrison Board?
Uh, no, I haven't laid on them. A little, I could get the little, listen.
So, next week-
Next week, we're going to get the little, we're going to want character, it's the R and Q, all these things, so we get the little, and also, flat, at hand.
And we should be upping quotes for the next thing.
Right. Million of that. We'll have to get some reimbursement from the insurance, still, I don't have a sense of it, but-
So, on Hampton Springs, yes, ma'am, when is the projected complete date?
I am, was told today that we still feel like we can finish the end of December. Um, the electrical contractor started digging the trench yesterday, from what I understand, and pulling the wire, um, after, um, the plumbing to the, um, the pipes to be put in next, next week. We have issued a purchase order for the grinder pump, and after all of that, though, we'll have to do some work on the electrical, had to still, maybe some cleanup, but I was told today that we're still shooting for the end of-
No, you know that, the electrical contractors, they okay?
Mm-hmm.
They would dig the trench and run the wire, and it was in power, wasn't it?
That was my understanding.
I kind of need the shocker, it's a little, there is.
Well, maybe because it, it will be underground instead of overhead.
They got, they got underground, they-
Well, and what we wanted to do at the same time was have our inmate squad work on running the water in the sewer, excuse me, the sewer and the electrical at the same time, is what we're trying to get done. So, we're using our inmate squad for part of that. We have a list of improved, uh, repairs that need made at Hampton Springs. Um, I've got that list, I believe, um, late last week, of repairs that we need, need to make there.
Yeah, we all like to see a plan. We have a project like this that, that we have the schedule, and the schedule says during this time, this will be done, and then this will be done, and this will be done, and at the end of here, it's, it's going to be completed.
I know.
Every time we have a, a project.
Yeah, my, my, my.
Yes, and that way, it doesn't go on for two years, or have a long experience, things like those, very long time. But if you've got that schedule, then everybody knows the expectation, and we kind of know what's going on with it. If for some reason you can't meet that schedule, then tell the squad, what's going on, why you can't meet it? Um, but just to have, have a project, we're going to do this, and sometime when, we're still, you know, it needs to be specific.
I think what happened when we first put this list together is we tried to, we tried to gather all the information we could, and we wouldn't forget, we need, we have this, we have this, we have this, we have this. And then we prioritized if we moved along, or as our inmate squad becomes available, and, um, I think that we prioritize it by week. I understand what you're saying about the schedule, but I, I think that we knew from the very beginning that some of these schedules could maybe a whole year before we even look at it, and that was-
Well, see, I sure didn't understand that. Did, did, did anybody else understand that? Jim, did you understand that?
No, no.
No. Not all of it makes it up.
It's going to be a whole year, just a, well, we've given, racking out, you know, what it's going to take, or all.
I would say this is, will be better. This is a work in progress, and we have tried to include more information and, and have a better idea of, of the date, but, you know, we, I would say, we started to prep and just kind of threw it all in.
And in fairness to you, this project was, was started before you took the position that you got, and, and I know that it drove along and, and did not move the way it should have prior to you, so I understand that you came into a lot of scenarios like that, but from, we're, it's a new day, it's a new day in county government, so from here on, we can forget all that stuff. We'll make schedules, and, and we will be free to, you know, this is how long it's going to take, and then our expectation is not one thing, and reality is the, is the other, you know?
I understand, and we will be better. We'll do a better job with that, and try, now, another, something we added to this, just so everyone is on the same page, is to note which projects aren't funded, because there are some projects on this list that we have not identified a funding source, and that way, there's not a, unclear expectation, because it may take us six months to figure out how to fund this project, or it could have been started in a different budget year, and we don't have a funding for it this year. So, some of these projects, I will have to come back to the board and say, we had no idea how much this is going to cost, it's not funded, now we know how much it's going to cost, and board, we need funding. So, we have, um, we will identify those projects as well, and do a better job, um, with that. I don't have any questions, is there anyone else? Have any questions about that?
Now, the park capital hall roof is there.
Yeah.
That, that, those roofs up there, and the roof, or-
Well, I'm kind of understanding that our engineer actually, um, they took another work, look at the roof, you know, he had to make sure that we know exactly what we need, and he's working on a scope of work so we can, so we can start up paying quotes. And that project in particular, when it first started, it kind of evolved, and that's happened with several of our projects. Um, we'll think, okay, this is what we need to do, but then as we dig into the project, unexpected costs or an unexpected cost, um, there was an assumption with that particular project that our paying inmate work squad is going to do this work for us. Well, when I asked for DOC to approve that, they said, absolutely not. So, that, that's, that's, now it becomes something totally different, but I don't think we need to, maybe, before we put projects on the list moving forward, we need to do all the research first.
Exactly, and I'll stick to the fact.
But, as, as you said, this is something that, you know, we've inherited, and so now we're just trying to work through all of these issues. But I would say that sometimes I think we overcommit, and to say, yes, we'll be happy to do that, and we don't realize what we're committing to, and we have several projects that have taken that direction.
And, and not only that, it's, um, it, it kind of, we have too many projects at one time. We're not, we've got this project, finished this project, and then turn on this one, um, and I don't know if that's the best way to do it, I mean, it seems like it is, but maybe in the scheme of things here, that may not be the best way, but it, it does seem like too many projects and not enough, and I know Kenneth is not only engineer, and of course, we didn't outsource some of that, right?
Right. But typically, I think what's happened in the past is we've said, of course, we can do that without communicating, and how, and it only takes two years before we're freed up to do this, or we won't, we don't, we don't know how much it's going to cost, let's find that out. I think we ran into that with Hampton Springs. Um, we, you know, we did not realize what we were committing to. So, I think that, um, when we have a conceptual project, that maybe we should not put it on the list until we know exactly what we're committing to.
And even then, well, so, another example was the Shaysborough Community Center, we allocated this much money, not having any idea of what, how much it was going to cost. We didn't have a design, we didn't have anything, it was up to, extra number of dollars, and you couldn't do it for that, and that's why on the Hoggis Park project, I said, I want to just do it in value, and then let's get a, a number to it, and then add a percentage on top of that, because, you know, same always, company unexpected or whatever, but I think that's the true way to do all the projects.
I, I think that, um, we just, maybe we don't want to forget that a commissioner or a group is out for something, so we put it on the list, and then as, you know, as time goes on, then it, it becomes very painful for all of us, because it appears that we are not diligent, but it's, it's, I don't think it's that, I think it's that we haven't planned thoroughly, and we don't know the cost, and we haven't allocated the resources, and these things just have a tendency to become an issue. Now, something that, and there are projects that never did make the list, like painting of the, of the complex, that's not even on the list, but we're working on that concurrently. Um, so we will continue to, to do a better job.
We're going to do a bit on that, pretty.
Mm-hmm. And as we, um-
And that's been funded, because I, it's in the budget, isn't it?
It is in the budget, but I will say, um, that project was in two pieces, and, and has been a little difficult to work out because of the timing of it, but the paint, the repair and painting of the windows, I submitted to the historical society, um, to see if we could obtain reimbursement. Um, so we did receive fifty percent reimbursement from the drain grant funding for the audience at the courthouse. I expect to receive reimbursement for the painting of the windows, and then once the painting of the building itself has been completed, I will submit that for, um, reimbursement. So, um, and-
Excuse me, I wouldn't call that.
Always a bit funny.
Well, I've had a painter, I want to play with him, I'm not my bro, that's a slow process.
Very frustrating.
Very slow process.
Well, I don't know if anyone noticed, but our parking, the, the wall, um, for the public parking, we have several colors that we took up, because the colors that we chosen, everything comes gray for some reason, so we're still trying to pick the best color.
I'm colorblind, maybe it's the straw.
But everyone else is. We're, we're trying, we're hoping that we can land on the color that we want for the building, we were choosing for something neutral, and then, um, we should have the, hopefully, we'll have the building painted, and it will be nice.
I thought, got pretty good, that's who did, the last one, I thought, pretty reasonable. Anything about this four sided building, this bad housing wall, go left, or it needs to work back, is that, I don't think that can be able to, is anything in, in plans that's-
That's, you know, see, I see the paint, I can't remember which year.
Okay, okay.
Yes, we could ask. And again, that's the full, we're thinking I asked for, and so it really, I think, opened the department heads' eyes to things that we need to have done.
Did we ever get the roof fixed, sold there, and then start with the side room? Temporarily. Didn't leave any more?
No, we actually, so, we contracted that out.
Oh, it doesn't make, I can't find any, it does, okay.
And then we also painted safety line, I don't know if you noticed that?
That was a good deal, I feel, a lot of this wall, too, just had people fall.
Right, so we got that done.
You got that? You don't recall? You said?
Thank you.
You don't burn out on, you just, uh-
Okay.
Maybe it's not.
All right. Number eight, Victor Longton, the management, to discuss family fishers management and a concept proposal for the Taylor County Postal Service.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, yes, that was first. Um, I'm going to try to go through, I have a couple presentations, and we'll just try to go real quick through the whole dad, and then we can open up discussion if you have any question or comments. Thank you. Um, so, the, the, oh, yeah. Hello, Eric, hi.
Yes, my name is Eric.
Okay, so, I, I'm going to explain what management is, because that's what basically you do all the time, but in fisheries management, uh, it's, it's, it's a process that comes from gathering information, analyzing information, uh, making a decision, composing, uh, and then, uh, it will all come into a resolution. And that resolution would be that the instrument, the final instrument of management is to have to propose, uh, uh, to govern the fisheries, to continue the productivity of the resource. So, at the end, what we want is to have, uh, access to the resource in the long term. Uh, maybe this is a little bit small, but, um, what it says is, in, in U.S., the fisheries management is, uh, is based under the Magnuson, is, is Stevens Act, and it's based on three pillars. Um, so, the first one is time. Of course, we need time to collect the data, and make the data robust enough to make a decision. Then we have the management itself, which is the process of discussion, analysis, and, uh, making a final decision. And then we have, of course, the enforcement. To do that, uh, and all these processes are, uh, the system is designed to prevent three main things. First, avoid overfishing of the stock. Secondly, the stock is overfished, then quickly to, to quickly stop the overfishing, and then if it's too late, if we come too late on the resource, then, uh, we use the instruments, or we use the system to restore the resource to a previous state, or, well, that's what it's supposed to do. To do that, um, fisheries are, uh, basically work in geographic areas, uh, and these geographic areas is what they call the regional fisheries management college, it's counted, in, in our page, it's the Gulf Council that we are attached to, and they develop, uh, uh, management plans for the region, for the different groups of fish. So, if I see, was it tried, it provides own guidelines, so the whole region, the different states try to, uh, address the, the management in the same way. So, fisheries management, do you have a point here? They thought?
Um.
Oh, no, so. I present, oh, okay.
It's, it's very, it's a problem.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. So, fisheries management involves a different, uh, group, and of course, each group will have a different interest on how they, uh, perceive how the, the fisheries need to be managed. And, uh, well, that, that's the way it is, of course, it is handled everywhere, but at the end, we, what we want to do is have, uh, a range, we have different indicators, and even if it's biological, or the operation of the fisheries, the, the socio-economic aspects involved, how many jobs, the revenue the fishermen make, or the economics, the, the fluctuation of the price of the, of the product, of the fish itself, or the seafood itself. So, uh, uh, managers try to establish, uh, a range, and the decisions are made in base that the, uh, um, that that, uh, indicator fluctuates between those ranges that, uh, make the whole system work. So, and we come, at the end, when we're discussing a specific species, uh, to the famous fisher's stock effect. Everybody, when we go to all these meetings that discuss, uh, uh, this regulation on a, on a fishy, there's always the term, fish stock effect, what happens? So, what is exactly a, a stock effect, and this is important to try to, to understand of it, because sometimes our logic lets us assume what the definition is, but, uh, it definitely, in fact, we mean that, uh, the time to, or the managers have the same concept as other people, right? So, we want everybody to, to be on the same page, uh, when it comes to understand what a fish stock effect is. So, basically, what we try to do is to, uh, find answers to different questions, like what's the target, uh, harvest rate, uh, best balance of resource conservation and use. Uh, so we want to know what's the size of the population, and then how much do we take out of the population and make sure that the fishermen are doing great, but the population is doing good, too? Uh, have a, I go back, here, okay. Uh, have-
Oh, my God.
Have the stock decline is our basic condition, that the stock rate and harvest rate is this- That the stock risk and harvest rate is sustainable levels? So, this is our terms that in, in, in general, uh, the, the, um, the managers use. And, uh, what they use to, at the end, make what they call a stock assessment is a mathematical model. It's a, it's a program in a computer that you put all kind of information in and this information comes first from the catch. So, what fishermen report at their catch, that's a lot of the data that goes into that model. And then we have the biology, which is the agency goes out or researchers go out and they collect their own information on the species and they use like mortality, when they're going to use, how the fertility, how many eggs do they lay, how perky they are, in which area? How do they, where do they spawn? All these kind of factors that are very important for the life cycle of the species. And then, of course, what we need to do is to get an, uh, a type of the abundance. Uh, to do that, uh, depending on the species, uh, for example, in the cows, what the researchers do is they, they, uh, they have a transect or they have, uh, a statistically select number of spots where they go and they, uh, collect their information. Uh, for other species, some sheep just go and they use ex count to collect the biomass that is available in the water. So, and they put that, all this information together. So, these three sources of information is poured into this model and the model comes out with a number. Uh, basically, this is, uh, this is the fact. So, that number is what's saying, okay, the, the population is doing good or the population is not doing too good or we see this situation and so we need to make a decision to control. And when you control, uh, in a fishery, you can control the, the number of fishermen, the, uh, the fishing gear they use, where they go fishing, uh, the season, if there's a season, the size of the animals. So, there's a lot of aspects that also can be regulated. Um, and, uh, in the last, um, I would say in the last decade or, or so, uh, the approach for fisheries management has turned to what they call the ecosystem-based fisheries management. And that, uh, before, we just thought of fish like an individual who was alone there in the ocean. We're just collecting that. And then some, uh, over time, when some fisheries collapse, uh, time is relaxed that if you remove part of that, of those fish, those fish are part of, you know, a network. Uh, they're eaten by someone or they eat someone or they occupy a space in, into an ecosystem. So, if we remove them, who takes that space? What impact that might have in that ecosystem as well? So, here, we have different, uh, how these networks work is very complex and the, the, the bottom of it is that this is so dynamic that it's pretty much impossible to really collect information on all the parameters and you have a series of data along the time that will let us know how really everything is working because this is so, so dynamic. So, they collect information on planets, uh, all the biological aspects, water quality, uh, and then we collect information on the fishing itself and then we have socioeconomic aspects. All of those information is coming into the management, to make management actions and then, uh, all these aspects try to be considered. Well, this is, uh, pretty much the same, just the knowledge is gonna give that. So, what's been happening in, in, in Taylor County? We have two groups of fisheries. Everybody knows that. We have the recreational fisheries with the very important target species like cows, trout, uh, the, uh, the red ram, kobia, the gatrooper. Uh, and that fisheries is in short and short. And then we have some commercial fisheries also that target sun crab, blue crab. We have some trinkers and, uh, of course, some other species that are related to, or they share the same ecosystem and the same areas as some of the targeted species. So, basically, we went, uh, pretty much all of you of this two. For example, one of the meetings in Singhaji where the commercial fisherman was talking about the sun crabbing, uh, and, and that's something that is really important. But what I wanted to address is that those changes in regulations that's been happening, that's gonna continue happening in the coming years. So, we have to be prepared for that and try to understand that, uh, for some species, uh, these fluctuations are, um, in a time series. It can be ten years, twenty years, five years, two years. It's, it's very difficult to really understand if we can have a long database that gives, uh, pretty much good view of what's actually going on. Uh, this year, we have been dealing with cows, uh, trout and sun crab and, and the bite has especially the black sea bass. But they see where all that is the uncertainty. So, it, it, we will always, even if this, uh, information, this stock assessment, uh, the time is coming in front of the commissioner, FWC commissioner. And why do FWC commissioners take right away what people come and say? It's because they know there's even a lot of uncertainty in the scientific information that they, that they receive. So, uh, the, at the end, the public is a really important source of information as well to make decisions. Uh, especially here in Taylor County, I think that, uh, we're very glad that we get pretty much all the coast protected. We have a very, uh, good water quality. Uh, we don't have big cities, uh, on the coast that are really like public in the water. Uh, the big, uh, the big bend, the rest part of the surf is there to provide a great habitat for all mother board fishing. So, we're in a really, really good position if you see it from the ecological or biological point of view, which is fine background. Uh, but also when you hear what the fishermen say, say, uh, you know that the situation is good. Yeah. Every day, I see, I, I hold, a lot of captains, char captains, that every day, you know, day to day, they just post features and features and features and features, all what they get. And when I talk to them, pretty much they said, uh, and we have to release, I don't know, how many fish back in the water. So, that's a good indicator that, uh, that the situation is good. Um, I was saying that, uh, when there was a lot of uncertainty, we, we, I had to follow the correct scenario approach on fisheries management. That was the previous, the previous one. And that approach what says is that if in the scenario of a lack of information, you always take a decision to protect your resource. For, um, I don't think that's the case we, we have here in Taylor County. Everybody, and I'm pretty happy about that, that the, a lot of the people in the coast is really aware of how important or of the resources are. So, uh, that's a great thing. And they want to, uh, to pursue a way to make sure the populations remain healthy in, during time. And these statements connect with my following presentation. Uh, but I, I'm gonna go there, uh, in a minute. So, for example, in the sun crab case study, uh, there are different aspects that we need to consider, uh, some legal aspects. Uh, when they were discussing, uh, exactly what is a target species? Is the fishery targeting that he said that I'm going out fishing to get this resource, to get the sun crab this day? But the, uh, the fishing gear that they use, they're not specific for one fishy. Other fishes can get caught, right? And that's what it called by catch. It means inevitable catch. Uh, so, if they go out there to get a sun crab and they get zero sun crab, but they get thousand pounds of black sea bass, then you, as a manager, you have to feel like, okay, are they really targeting the sun crab or, or targeting the, uh, the black sea bass? Uh, and this is something to, that maybe needs more discussion. I think this is a really important topic. Uh, and then we have the economic aspect, the fleet operation cost. It's not just saying, uh, ten, oh, let's say like, uh, twenty-four foot, two hundred traps, one crew, uh, that feeds inshore. Then a vessel that is forty-six has eight hundred traps, three crews and go offshore. So, the cost, of course, is gonna be very, uh, different in these two boats. And that's what we saw, that's what, what we heard during that presentation and some people say, oh, yeah, I think with three hundred pounds of black sea bass will cover a cost, and then five hundred, and then eight hundred, nine hundred, eleven hundred, fifteen hundred. So, what, and that may be because of that, of the real, uh, concept of what the operational unit, fishing unit. Uh, then we have four biological, biological aspects like the interaction with other species. Uh, the sun crab, gatroopers and black sea bass, they share absolutely the same area. So, where you go targeting one, you will find the other two. And there is scientific information on that. Um, and then we have the social aspect. How many jobs are, have a lot, uh, how many people leave out of it? If they don't go out fishing, how many families are gonna be affected? Uh, and what's to show, these, these, these three graphs is the, uh, landing, commercial landing for octopus, sun crab and black sea bass. And this is official la- data from FWC. And we see that the situation some peaks. Uh, and for example, here we see a peak of octopus and then we see that, uh, the sun crab decrease. And that's logic because the octopus coming to the trap to credit on, on the sun crab. Um, but when we see this decrease in, in black sea bass, for example, do we say, is, is, are there really not catching enough black sea bass? Or maybe they are landing their catch somewhere else? So, there's these deals and I go back to the same term, uncertainty of these. I think that the, uh, the board is doing a great job to try to balance, uh, the, the need for residence as to protect their businesses, but at the same time showing some concern about the importance, the preservation of the resource far. So, uh, I, I'm here at the resort. Uh, for me, it's very difficult because I can only advocate in favor or against one of those things. Uh, but I will try to bring the information. I said, uh, fisheries management is like a negotiation. You have to go to the table with something that you can, you, you want to trade. Okay, I give you this and I get this back. So, uh, I am satisfied and it, uh, it really, for us to be satisfied as well. So, I, I think that's, uh, that's a great way, um, that we, uh, can, uh, address that. I, I wonder if you have any questions?
I do. I'm thinking about stocks and, you know, for the past, uh, how many, we've had the business people that have come in and wanting to open up stocks season early. And then you have others that say, well, they're gathering stocks that are too small and it's gonna block out the population. And I just wonder, you know, when, when they go to these meetings and you have all the businesses that are advocating to open the season early, the decision makers, how much are they in store? About the pressure from the business people to process and contribute that?
Good question. Yeah, that's a great question. And actually, this year, I was, uh, I was very surprised. Uh, I think I put that on your, uh, package. I, I include three slides, uh, related to cows. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't include, I didn't include them in the presentation here. But, uh, Ju- June fourteenth, we, usually before the opening of the cow season, we have a seminar and we bring, uh, Dr. Steve Geiger, which is the main researcher of FWC for cows, who's been studying cows for twenty years. Uh, so, when he showed his information of, of the cows, pre-season cows, uh, the last three years, the amount of the abundance of cows has been decreasing.
Yes, we see that.
Yes. And my last question before we close, uh, was to him. I said, so, we need to get prepared as a community to address a potential breakdown of war population? And I was expecting him saying yes. And he said, no. Really? Yeah, I was really impressed. And he said, what I'm seeing here is that the cows have a fluctuation cycle that is about eight years. So, if we're possibly gonna, uh, go to the last, uh, lower abundance in the cycle and then the following years are gonna be really good. And then if you look at another graph, the monitoring that FWC did last, uh, last year, yes. And that's really con- uh, it's, it's the same, where they got their same results as I did in two thousand seventeen during my cow monitoring, which is like, uh, we see the fluctuation of the landing of cows goes from very high, bottom peak, bottom peak, bottom peak. Each peak is a weekend. And then, the, the landing report drops during, uh, week days. But also the peaks are spot and then at the beginning of the season, it's really high and then at the end, it's really low. So, the, the higher, uh, pressure on the resource, I would say is the two, three, four weeks, no more than four weeks. It's only on the weekend. And then it really drops dramatically. And, uh, the other number that she estimated was the number of cows that are really taking out of, or, uh, of the water. And it was about fifteen, I mean, uh, fifteen million, uh, cows removed during the cow season.
In, in what area?
In, uh, in here, in, in Taylor County, yes. Their estimation is about fifteen million cows removed out of the water. That sounds like a lot. Uh, but let's remember that they're really, um, the productivity's really high. Even though there is a big market during early stages, uh, it seems like the, uh, population is still doing good. Uh, so, we can move to continue talking on, on that to the next presentation. So, in the, in the, all the three years that I've been here, uh, it's been a kind of concern and we have discussed that. Uh, I think last year, I prefer, uh, Grant, also to purchase a piece of land to support agriculture and fisheries. And at the end, we dismissed that, well, the board dismissed that. And, uh, I shared the same information this year with the Chamber of Commerce in Singhaji and they really want to do something to make sure that the cow population stays healthy. Uh, they want, uh, a hatchery or a nursery that can repack cows, uh, in our area. But, uh, from my experience, usually if you address one of these topics from only one perspective, sometimes it's really difficult to, you know, to, to make it a win. Uh, in the past, in the past few years, I've worked with a couple of, uh, potential, uh, investors that are interested in, uh, installing, uh, a hatchery or shellfish hatchery and it's been difficult. Uh, so, what I thought is that hearing in, in Taylor County, considering our economy, let's see, uh, most of the coastal activity... uh most of the coastal activities are are important economic writers in the county, especially in the town. Uh I mean, fisheries uh mainly. I don't have any hearing, right? Okay. The regions in in general, I mean, from Pacto all the way to the Panhandle, is really competitive to bring people into uh into their area. Not only if 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 people like to go fishing, but also, you know, enjoy sandy beaches and they have other alternatives besides that, especially if they go to the family. Uh and what I saw is that people that are come come scouting, they might go, if they don't bring their albow, they might rent about one or maybe twice, but they spend the whole week here, at least four or five days. So what did they do the other day? Uh what do we without what do we have to offer uh for people to stay here? So uh as I've mentioned, we have most of our boats is protected and we have wonderful conditions and a wonderful landscape to show. And King Haci functions as one of the dynamic center of the marine coastal of the county. Pretty much all that happens uh economically speaking is in King Haci. Uh and I need to provide you with another report um that uh it is a report that shows in the map where the people is coming from to Tater when they come fishing. And you and you can even see if they come, uh for example, uh to target trout, where they are coming from. And what we see is that people from Perry and Georgia, they go to Keaton Beach. And people from uh Mainfield go directly to the King Haci. So people from Perry and this and and other parts, we don't go down to King Haci. Um so it is like they they manage like different uh markets. So what I what I see is that the county likes a multifunctional center to offer uh products or services for also uh visitors. I I have been, for example, our last vacation, I I went with my family to Vanmark Cove and uh we went to Destin. And they just love to walk on on the uh beach road and they love to get, you know, the two shirts to Destin, beautiful beaches. And so they their uh grant is a town. The thing happened when we went to Washington or when we went to Gatlinburg, you go to these places and they market this place. That's that's their goal. So I I think maybe we should envision somehow uh something like that and use the coastal resources as a way to address that.
Have you talked to the town hall?
Yes, yes, yes.
Take care.
Yes, I've 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 had discussions with with um Don and uh with 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 Weppe that is down in King Haci as well. And uh I know that there's a lot that they're doing, uh but uh there's a lot more that can be done. So economically speaking, and I think maybe you have seen this this slide before, uh we have estimated scallop season brings about four point five million, that's our estimation. Other people say about ten million, in Harwood, it's not me, the press. Architecture REE about five point five million, uh since he was president. Uh recreational fisheries about fifteen million, this this, all these numbers are really conservative, I think. Uh commercial fisheries about two million a year. Uh the economic uh impact of boating activities is around uh eleven million. And approximately fifteen percent of labor is allocated with coastal activities to this. So there is still a lot that uh can be offered to create new jobs and new ways of of living. Uh I I really like your uh vision of working, for example, in a boat ramp in Great Warrior and, you know, diversify the areas where people can really go and have access to coastal resources. So the how I and this is just a concept, this is an idea, okay? Uh so uh how I see it is uh this coastal center is a self-sustaining multifunctional activity that might have a shellfish production, uh which one might be around commercially operated or leased, uh to produce not only scallops, but other um products like oysters or clam for the industry around here. Uh then I will like thank for fisheries talking, some people ask me that. Why don't we repop uh trout or red drum or even some people said no. This is something that might be done, but it I think is very uh difficult to do at first. It's it's better to start small and then grow. Uh they have permanent and occasional or informational displays. We have plays a lot of times in the boat ramp, but I I really don't time to me to think they're accomplishing what they are there for, I'm not sure. So but if we have them in a place where uh it's more accessible to people, um I I I think that would make a better impact. Uh I can station area, souvenir store, uh and then restrooms, of course, restroom and park. Uh so if we go to that place, we will we will be able, the visitors and residents, will we will be able to uh visit a uh shellfish hatchery with tanks. And then uh visitor center where they will see, for example, red drum and trout and talk about our nature coast, uh they might be able to buy, purchase souvenirs uh while they're after they're drinking something on the station area or buying whatever they want, groceries or whatever. Uh and where is the best place? We have tried to maybe when when we were uh preparing the proposal to purchase the land, it was in very isolated areas. Uh but we have a great uh the county has a great asset, which is uh this uh this uh property right here in front of the boat ramp uh that are now in operation. Uh so what if we find a way to use that uh lot of uh land for um different activities that can bring, not only provide services and products to the visitors, but also provide preventing for uh income to the county? Uh and for example, we already have like parking space, we have the restaurant. And let's just like envision if we have a visitor center here, which is just a display from F U C, uh the Department of Ambulance Protection, NOAA, FEMA, uh you know, and then just showing different aspects that are really important in poor regions. And then for the next, the aquatic production phase, and then we have at the station area. This is just a a bunch of ideas that I draw up there. You're gonna see this, this is just a... Uh but what do we need? The first thing of course is to build carnage, because that uh it's very hard to accomplish this if if the county wants to go uh alone on the journey. Uh the best way, and and that way, we can leverage carnage if we bring in tables. And I know there are resources, at least F U C, NOAA, D E P, I know they have resources for uh for example, for uh displays of educational informational uh things. Uh I know if if we come out and say, hey, we have this uh this property in front of the boat ramp and we want to do open abiding for leasing, uh I'm pretty sure our businesses will be really interesting in getting that cost when during summer, they have thousands of people, visitors just running ready for us. Uh so it makes it really attractive for private investors. And without the private investors, this is gonna be very difficult as well. Uh and then, of course, we will have the uh the Chamber of Commerce, which really know how to get uh to the businesses, from the local businesses and how to support them to to get on board. And the University of Florida for that extension, Nature Coast Biological Station, the Tropical Culture Lab, which is south of Tampa Bay. And they know a lot about raising uh scallops and especially these companies, Bay Shellfish. They have all the know-how of how to use scallops. So uh if we bring the all these people together and we offer something in return, I I think I think they will consider the opportunity of of getting on board. Uh I want to just to discuss the Teter P, as a case of study. Uh they don't have more things than we do. Uh and when you go to Teter P, uh you see the difference. Uh uh because they really know how to, I don't know what it is, like how they fly here. I don't know whether it's a new. They work together, I don't know. But um it was uh I'm just throwing out a a bunch of ideas. What would be uh the way I see other staff? And I I already have something before the first one, uh which is, of course, depending to you. Make a decision on the visibility of fish for also to go or not go to pursue something like this. Uh is a decision I have, probably later, and I pray committee to draft a plan of action. Uh at the county staff and uh at the extension agents, I will be glad to uh support or lead from the county point of view uh this thing. But this is something I cannot do by myself. I will lead, and that's why I I said, well, uh I pray committee to bring ideas. And then it came with something else that I have experienced in the past, is that for these kind of uh contests, they open a contest. So they say, okay, the the county wants to do a coastal center in in King Haci. And we offer a contest for proposals of how to address that. And architects, engineers, uh M G Ls, they all come with this amazing idea of how to deal with that, just at the contest level. And then from there, you can move forward. And that will bring also the will give the the people the sense that they they belong to that as well. So um I I think it's 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 a good way to to win win for everybody, for the resources, for the county, for uh for King Haci. Um so some sometimes people call me that, I'm a dreamer. I I prefer be a dreamer, but you know, just do nothing. I I I love to get in charge.
Yeah, I appreciate your enthusiasm and uh with this project and and obviously you've done a lot of work and um it's very interesting. Um I wish that we could add a little something for Keaton Beach. Um having uh a little place there, uh and I hear it from people down there, we need something here. We have nothing, you know, we need we need more. And Keaton Beach, I'm a house, you know, we we can incorporate something there to stimulate maybe some growth. Um but it's it's I'm interested, what what do you think of this?
I think it's a good idea. Um not only you're gonna bring in the people that you have come in fishing and shopping and all, but you also gonna have uh schools that wanna come over, be a part of it. Uh so there's nothing, nothing around that you go way over west water to uh to some of those uh Pacific aquatic uh areas over there, or you gotta go to FXU's uh lab down at the coast. And uh I think Tater County, too, Madison County, Jefferson County, or if it's from even counties out of Georgia, would come down here and take school along, which would bring in the extreme kind of law enforcement. Uh and I would um I'd be willing to bring it up, that develop a party meeting and talk with our members. And if we could set up a time, make victims come to the event, to the development authority and get inspired what they believe.
Yeah, that was that was basically why I wanted you in, so since I was just hoping that the development authority might just last on for a long term.
Well, you know, basically, and we've been talking about lately, so this area, and we are Tater County Development Authority. So we wanna go and help all the counties again. So I'll I'll talk to them in extreme and see what we can light up.
Yeah, I'd be more than black suits, come to our meeting and attend again and just have an open conversation. As I said, this is just a concept idea.
Be glad.
Yeah, maybe you could do a shorter version for the T C D A, because you know, they try to limit to one island for the whole meeting.
Yes, yes.
But I'm sure the T C is, you know, making a lot of...
They can show us that technology and back and things like that. Uh it's last extra, if you just believe in uh would be really interesting. You know, the economic impact, knowledge. And and I agree with the people that, you know, King Haci's role. Keaton Beach has a chance to grow, that they need something to grow from.
When you're picking one.
And if, even if it could be an outbreak of something, that's King Haci, you know, uh I'll keep it what I need with the bar built. Or put it in between both.
Maybe I might do a handout, get people before you come. This is the third time I've seen this presentation. And you do a good job, that's a lot of potential, just for them. Anyway, do good, thank you.
Yeah, and I think these also can be attached to, or some of the Commissioner Murphy's who was talking to me before, uh like, we we need to prepare our residents to to be more entrepreneur, create businesses, create jobs, give the money flowing in the county. Uh if we prepare a series of, for example, kayak knee guides, uh that'll show that area in town hallways, you were painting or in or in um spring water or even King Haci river. Uh they they can offer not only just to go out pattern, but just also to teach people about what we have to offer here. Water, bottles, you know, or or a lot of people, that's a a really interesting targeting market for extra and and growing and emerging gas. So I I appreciate uh you listening to me. And if I can be of any help, uh I'm more than glad to to try to move me forward.
Any questions, anybody there?
I have a question. You often put in a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate sticking out of the box. But the property that you identified, it's across the bridge from the King Haci boat ramp. It's my understanding, I know already, it's a congested area. If you're not wed to that property, just gotta make now use for a hook, a park, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
So uh that would be a concern I have, a hook. I don't know that idea looks like county owned, but if you're gonna put in everything described there, where the where the hooks go park, you know, this is this concern.
Yeah.
They have a new marine coming in that same area, too.
They have a...
They have a new marine coming in that same area.
We got a quick secondary in King Haci.
Well, that's right.
That is my waterfront problem. That would be perfect for what he's talking about. You know the King Haci that you're talking about?
Uh no. That's the one of the three pillars?
Yes.
Uh-huh, yeah, I have an idea.
That's really nice uh property. The construction at the um right there at the boat ramp would be good. And we, you know, that sounds really good, but I don't forget Keaton Beach.
Yeah. And that's the one that I used to mock, so I'm pretty...
The piece of property is just uh out of Keaton Beach, on Henry Gibson Road, just had a real design to it. It's about fifteen inch property with a creek on it. You remember your hatchery idea of it? That property is just couldn't put on market recently. Take a look at it.
I will.
Not a property gonna happen. I'm not proud of that, too.
What, what's an idea like that, that digitalizes a project for square, whether we're in a near position, somewhere, or again, most projects like this is built to take off. Is anybody familiar with Keaton Beach, and the issue of Keaton Beach?
That's what it is, and I'm.
Nobody ever been to Keaton Beach?
Yes.
You know, you need to grab a little inspiration, we did it a quarter year now, and I left that, I had the voting event, or these, okay, and at one time, there was nothing but fine you could, and again, they created a declaration, and people from around the world to do that here, preserve that, that's a large preserve, right on the, that's Keaton Beach, you know, we never did it. So I'm wrong if it was being brought along, but when I saw it, that's what I thought about, Keaton Beach. Now, maybe something to look into, to compare it to these type projects versus what happened in Long Island.
At one time, New York's Charles Golden, come, come up here and go out on the Seashack Holloway, huh, is that Seashack Holloway?
It's a famous.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't know where that is, but.
It's still active, uh, well, you know, we got a couple of me's out there.
Yeah.
That's Georgia County laws, you know, so.
Something's gonna happen, I'll tell, by November the fourteenth, with the University of Florida.
Yeah.
So. Lake Coast, called Lake Coast something, but we may do a few meetings there.
Yeah, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad they know that others know each other, when you go up to Seashack, I go to, uh, Seashack, invited all the time, I pull up on both two hundred miles, go fishing, uh, so that, that, and they have things to offer, you know, this thing, what I get involved about, when I went to Seashack the other day, fuck over in trucks down there, and nobody to do, even go through the movie, down there, you don't have that problem.
Yeah.
I agree.
Chairman of the Board, please see this permanent law update from County Council. This is just an informational item, um, to bring to your attention, that the Department of Labor is going to make some, um, some changes in, um, the, what they consider, um, the minimum wage for exempt employees, which would be at the point that we would have to start paying overtime. So this is something new that has come our attention, we did not suggest for overtime for this particular group of employees. Um, we will be attending, we will be attending unemployment law update, and there are any December, um, but we, and so, we're in that information gathering process right now. I believe that what we can do is offer overtime to these employees, um, rather than paying overtime, um, as a provision that we may be able to offer to our employees, but we will be working on policy and more information for the board. We just didn't want you to be surprised if we, you know, in December, if we say, okay, January, we're going to have to make.
Does it have to be an awful, or can it be amended?
That's something that we, we're trying to iron out. Now, my understanding is that for local state and federal government, we always had the ability to offer, um, compensatory time versus paying overtime for certain, for certain positions, which would be your exempt position versus your hourly position. Um, we just need to narrow that down, and we got this guidance very late, we can proceed it from Department of Labor. So we are trying to work through all of those details, and which we'll have to do fairly quickly, um, if we can. Now, this is the same rule, just about that, um, came up in two thousand sixteen, and then, um, right before it was, it was to take effect, we got a new president, and so this has been basically still, um, since then, but, so there was some, I would say, negotiations back and forth, and changes were made. So the initial annual and hourly rate that would be discussed has been changed some, but it still will affect, I would say, a handful of our employees, and we just, we're working on preparing for that. I just wanted to make sure that we gave, gave the board the information, so if you heard about it, you would know that we are working on it, and we will bring board information as soon as we see this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, number ten, the board, to continue this session of the toll rate, I, what I'm gonna give you, I picked up a couple of veteran packets last week, um, I have another one, um, if anybody would want it, it was what was given to, um, and, um, basically, the second task force meeting was last, um, Wednesday in, uh, Citrus County, and, um, we, the first thing is, they went over the government and downtown law again, that's really big on that, and, um, but the main thing is, um, that, um, they, it was, they knew this approach of identifying a lawyer, minimalization, mitigation, and enhancement consideration. In most of the extent, talking about both things, and, you know, lots, lots to consider kinds of, um, wetlands and conservation areas, and historical areas, and, uh, wildlife, and, uh, you name it, and their intent is to minimize the impact as much as they can. And, um, so, everybody's still wanting to know where the road's gonna be. And here, after talking with, uh, some of the leadership there, um, this is what I think, okay? I think that they're working on this road, and at some point in time, and I believe the next meeting in December that's gonna be here in Taylor County, they may start talking about that a little bit, but I think that they're gonna present their plan of where they think this road is gonna go. Then the task force, and I asked this question because when we took a break, I ran up front to, you know, to what, exactly what is our role, what are we gonna be doing the task force? I said, and when he told me that, I said, so basically, we're not gonna advise any committee, and he said, yes, you are, so basically, I think they're gonna present a road plan, and then, uh, we're gonna be able to give input, is what, is what they said. I said, well, we could be coming to carry a meeting with our engineer and, and some of us, and he said, oh, yes, we will. So at that point in time, um, we can start verifying before we think we're not the road that does, now, I don't know if that's gonna, I'm not sure if it'll be things or not, I don't know, but like I said before, um, I started working with Kenneth and Lwanda, and putting some things together of what we think, and this will certainly, uh, you know, uh, should have input into that. But, um, I'm sure it's a done deal, uh, and like I said before, this was, uh, the, um, I think it was put together by our governor and the, um, Senator Galbano, and then it quickly passed through the board this year, so it's pretty much a done deal. Um, we just need to capitalize on it as much as we can, wherever it comes through Taylor County, try, try to make the best of it. It may be, it may have enough opportunities for us, um, um, we talked about some different scenarios, Kansas and I, and Lwanda, of what we'd like to see happen. Of course, when I got there, I heard Jeff and Kate, I had some of the same ideas, too. So I think everybody, everybody wants to max, maximize the benefit and minimize the, uh, any, um.
Negative impact.
Any negative impact, yeah. So that's pretty much what I know, but I do hope that everybody will be able to be at the meeting in December. Well, I need to know, going forward, I just need to know exactly where you four are, because if I start walking through this, I need to know if we're all on the same page, if, if you're for this, if you're not for this, uh, are we gonna get down the road and say, no, we don't want this? Um, Commissioner, would you?
I'd say exactly, my boy, I'm for it a hundred percent, but I was with the Angel of that thing on Friday afternoon, coming at seventy-five, twenty, and I couldn't, you couldn't believe that, give bumper to bumper on both lanes, and, I mean, that, that, that can't, that, that is a boom lane, I mean, the people all going eighty-five miles an hour, and they all, they all on earth, and we don't have to, you know, we don't have to have another road somewhere, and it looks like we'd all, and it's got one up, two here out, I'm, I'm for it a hundred percent.
Please, okay.
I'm far, with the caveat, that I want us to do everything we can to minimize this effect, so, you know, if we have any, any input on where it goes, uh, realizing that there are a lot of people who definitely don't want to, I think we'll pass that part, I think it's coming, whether this commission will be shot or not, so I'm waiting to gather the, as much information as I can, to steer it into the right place.
Yeah.
So that, I'm, I'm basically far.
Okay.
You know, I don't have a problem with the roads that'll look like it's a done deal before you even do it, but they appropriate when it's, it's already on. Now, but I do know about Kentucky County north of us, they say, Phil County don't want it bringing on the mess.
Yeah.
Even the commissions out there so big as them, if you got anything to do with, scared of us, you all don't need, you need, you know, well, I don't know what kind of mind they thinking with, but then I look at Jefferson County, Jefferson County said, we wanna stay the way we are, we don't want to do it with it. So our position, I don't know what our position, and I do know that people are pushing, almost got a plan to do it, and they almost got way too good, and we, the same that I do, hope that we do have something, and it's gonna be good, ain't gonna be much.
I think it's more or less just a courtesy call, if you're giving out to it, or it's passed, it's passed anyway today, it's, it's for a profit. Even if they, for instance, I said that, it does not have an enemy here, for anything, okay? But eventually, the pass base will trickle on the economy here in the town, that's really good. That would be like a direct impact. It really doesn't matter to me either way, if it goes along, but I mean, that to be there, and it's improving, and it goes over, it's ever basically.
Well, I'm just, you know, going for, whatever these meetings, um, you know, I, I just wanna know that, I can say, our board is for the road and favors the road, but we want to have as much input as we can, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but we're gonna work really hard to, we've got, uh, uh, two local people that are involved with this district of state, and I feel a little good about that, you've got Ryan Asworth that grew up here, went to school here, and he's one of the main ones, and you've got Rosemary Edwards Woods who grew up here, family there, and, uh, so I talked with both of them pretty extensively last week, and, um, you know, I talked about our concern about where this road will be, we don't want it to negatively impact our business just on that team, um, we want as many, um, access roads as we can, um, and if everything's healthy, doesn't want it, that's, I guess, you know, that's fine with me, because then we can make our little hub here, and just straight to ten, and maybe that would be really good for us.
That'd be, that'd be good.
That would be good.
That'd be a lot of jobs.
Yeah.
That'd be generally jobs.
Let, let's see this. When I, I went to county council, there are some people in Lockaway County do not want it, they don't want to go in there.
Wow.
Well, the reason they don't want it there this place, because they doing everything they can do in Lockaway County, and when you reach the city, they're the one that comes to Seashack.
Mm.
And do the marvelous things, and, and, and the small community is what they want. They also says the frame, and they, he calls you out there, you know, they want to remain the same, but they don't want it in their county, now, they won't go to that county, so they can make five hundred, six hundred thousand off you, but they want to keep Phil County small, so they can come down there, and do that. Well, then, when you look at, who's coming from Georgia to Keaton Beach, that's a bunch of Georgia people coming out, they want to keep it small, so they can come to a happy end, but they coming from big towns out of Georgia, they want that, you know, big money, keep on a little time, you know, we gotta be proactive in taking, do we want to stay where we are, or do we want to go?
Well, if the road's gonna come here, we've got maximum of our benefit, as, as much as we can, always.
Uh, I'd like a couple of, I live in Chicago, I've been close to Jeffrey, close to Madison, and Brian Kaufman, good friend Kaufman, all those folks, and now, the officials up there are, they are part of, okay?
Yeah.
But the point I wanna make, if there's any county ready for it, it's us, that's kind of the easy twenty-six, we anticipate this, okay? The villages, I got people in Chicago, they're getting out of the villages, and villages, before they divided that two counties up and three extra tracks, they destroyed those counties, and John Wise, who's the first of the, the CEO of them, they destroyed, stop terms, Lake County, but then at the other side of that, Pitters County, we were looking at those two counties, and, and, and terms, and it's two, two different things, so we didn't want to be like the Pitters, and there's, uh, Navy, Customs Officer in Pitters County not paying, so either just got a, but all the people, they just flip it over, and you see what it is, that they all for it, get people out of there, I'm not gonna say when I'm for it or not, if it, if it does come, I think it's coming, I think it's a done deal, I think that, I went to the task, I went to two task forces through, we had a meeting in Leo, and they, they just a wind address thing to go through now, but we had hundreds on that task force, back then, we protected, honey, we protected, everything I think, and, uh, I just, I think we're ready for it, if it comes, I think it comes, we just sit back and watch, but anyway, I talked to Danny Dryer about the D, we talked the other day, and those things are still in place, it's gonna be good for, amazing, and all of that thing, I know it will, anyway, I just, I wanna make that, we were criticized for the D, we had eighteen public hearings, people come talk, know what they want to say, the county D, fifty years out, and those plans are still in place, and then Danny Dryer, he and I talked, it, it, even though the D, what we are, uh, Jefferson County north, most people don't know that Jefferson County north of Green, you get, you get, you get George about Jefferson County, most people bring us, anyway, I was, uh.
The, uh, tentative, that's how you think moving broader back.
That's what we were saying, we're doing the D.
The largest county in the state, one of the largest counties in the state, or several counties. And that come, it's gonna change the landscape, you've been through.
We got, we got a plan.
They build it all the way up there, and they go from there down here, and you gonna start, then we gonna start having more people die, and they're gonna be a part of the, of causing the.
But you know, there's a lot of people that, you know, that don't want the road to come through, so if they have any facts or anything about it, it's spread out, don't want the road to come through, but I've talked, I've talked with all the commissioners from the, um, county center involved, in Citrus County, I've sat by that commissioner, and, and they are very excited, they, they want the road.
They need, get people out there.
Look at that county, Madison County, it's same thing, y'all are wanting, those couples not, but, you know, then with Jefferson County, I've seen signs all over Jefferson County, that, known to the toll lady, I heard that they had passed the resolution, but And she said, yes, but then I'm hearing other things, I literally don't know, I literally don't know for Jefferson yet.
Yeah, well, do you, uh, that's three buildings, they, they didn't build enough it, have you seen those three buildings? They built two, but he got one more.
All of them are here in there long.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, I just, you know, I wanted to brief y'all on, on what was talked about, and there were a lot of people, again, at the end of the meeting, and they give everybody that wants to speak a chance, they can speak for three minutes, and every single one of them did not want the road to come, but it was mostly environmental people, it was people that, that moved to a small community, because that's where they wanted to live, and they don't want it to change, they wanna keep it that way. But, when we have these meetings, y'all can come.
What day you say is gonna be?
Um, we'll never, uh, so, decent, it was so taken, it was so taken.
Made it tell about this time, this time, it was from the walk down there.
Y'all can come to the meeting, you, you'll have to sit where the, uh, this is your sit, but then, you, you get to be there and help me, uh, you know, when the time comes, so, I want this whole board involved with this thing.
I have a friend that had a, a record business over there, I like it, and he said, from, I can, he did, you know, he had a small record business, so when it was made the highway to come through it, he had a whole fleet of records, and hired a bunch of people, and, and, you know, get a lot of people y'all, there's just a lot of things that will come off a, a road like that, that people aren't gonna talk about, it's gonna, gonna get people y'all in the, yeah.
Y'all come to the meetings if you can and want to, uh, and each time that I go, I'll come back and kinda give you all the clues, but, uh, this is not a, a town thing, this is not, this is, uh, everybody, uh, you know, everybody, the citizens, or we have it here, should come to the, to the meetings, and, um, you know, just hear what's going on and express your opinion.
They just need to come as close to family as they can.
And that's what we, they're saying, we want it as close, you know, it doesn't need to be nine miles south, because if you see a family that's gas nine miles, you're not gonna get off and get gas.
Right.
At nine miles.
And my, my great fear, Jeff, does not want, they want to go through that, they go, you know, east side there, opposite side of the, how are you?
That's what I'm scared of.
I am scared of, we're gonna get in there.
Well, they're not gonna put it through the bay mouth, but that, that, it looks like right now it's gonna come through, because the man owns the property, that they've already agreed, and not a barbers room, it's all wet, uh.
Is that right?
You know, Four Rivers, Timberland.
He's heavily involved in this.
He, uh, happily dogged with Governor's campaign last year.
No, I don't know that.
He, he definitely is a, a player.
I think he'll fill some land.
Uh, well.
If there are these, they have to deal with one land all anyway.
Yeah, I want to have, uh.
Get a lot of miles, which is, which is more than difficult.
If Jefferson, especially Jefferson County back, back out, and if they could, then, you know, if we had a big hub here, that would be great.
They're not gonna live in Jefferson County.
No, they're gonna be in Jefferson County.